...at the end of the closed session as required by government code section five or nine five four dot five. We accept it, we won't accept it, Mr. Reed's resignation effective today. Action determined in closed session. A recording of this meeting is being made and shall be kept for thirty days as public record. Director of legions led by Ms. Moore. Harris, second by Kirk, all in favor? Board member communications. So, we start with Ms. Moore.
Thank you for coming. I know it's on the time, it's hard to get out sometimes, but appreciate you coming and, uh, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Thanks for coming. I hope you enjoy your recital.
Thank you for coming.
And Mr. Gray?
Also, thank you for coming. I'm looking forward to tonight because, obviously, there's a lot of transparency that needs to be made clear here for both the board, the board members, and the district itself. So, I look forward to being able to be responsive to you. And I hope that this is, not for these particular reasons, but the way our district conducts business going forward.
I also want to say thank you for everyone for being here. It's nice to have a good audience, so, uh, thank you very much. So, can we have a RTA report?
Good evening. I have four items for the board tonight, most of which are not positive. First, RTA continues to wait for the district and the board to put our tentative agreement on contract language changes on the board agenda for approval. These changes are fairly minor, being mostly clarifications of current contract language and past practices. The changes should have little or no effect on the district's financial situation. If the board is waiting for the county advisors to go over the agreement, I would suggest that a meeting be arranged as soon as possible with me, the county representative, and the district's negotiations representative. This agreement was negotiated in good faith. It has been ratified by the RTA membership and needs to be given the appropriate attention by the board. Next, we received a memo yesterday from the business office informing teachers that their classroom supply budget money for next year was being cut to zero dollars. While this comes as no surprise, it is wholly unacceptable. Historically, in our district, teachers have been given a budget of one hundred to two hundred dollars per year to buy supplies necessary for the classrooms. We would either order supplies from an educational catalog through the district or buy the supplies locally out of our own pockets and then be reimbursed from the district. Now, we have been told this supply budget has been eliminated. The memo went on to say, quote, "The district will not waver in making sure that our classrooms have the fees and exactly the brands and quantities each desires." This approach also saves money. Teachers are the most miserly, budget-minded professionals in existence. Because they have so little to work with and spend so much of their own money, they now have to stretch every penny. They know when and where every back-to-school sale begins. If a box of crayon costs fifty cents at one store, they will drive across town to get a deal for forty cents per box, ignoring the time and gas spent to save a dime. Personally, I always wait for a certain sale in which I can get a one-hundred-sheet notebook for ten cents because I typically use twenty-five or thirty per year for instruction. I also give away fifty to a hundred to students needing paper. If the district orders these same notebooks for me, they will cost five times as much and would not allow me to help students in need. Last year, the district talked about central purchasing for basic supplies. This did not happen. If this is the plan this year, how can we be sure the supplies will be purchased? And again, it is almost certain the cost of the supplies will be more per unit and the types, quantities, and brands and styles of supplies will be different than what each teacher desires. This cut is to the tune of twenty thousand dollars, about four one-hundredths of a percent of a forty-two-million-dollar budget. It is like me spending thirty-six dollars of my annual salary. This is not an example of an effective cut. It is an easy cut that will come straight out of the pockets of teachers. There are better, more significant ways to save money with less teacher dissatisfaction. RTA asks the districts to reconsider its cut in teacher classroom supply line. The third item is today's U.S. Supreme Court decision on the right of public employee marketing units to charge equal dues to all unit members. In Janus versus AFS CME Council Thirty-One, the court ruled by before that local unions like RTA could no longer charge fair share fees to every teacher. RTA negotiated agency fee, also known as fair share fee, about twelve years ago. This was in line with another Supreme Court decision in nineteen seventy-seven, of Bood versus Detroit Board of Education, allowing agency fee to be part of the bargaining agreement. The reason for fair share fee is simple. The local unit is required by law to represent every employee in the bargaining unit in negotiations and employee relations such as grievances. If RTA, CTA is required to represent every teacher, every teacher should pay equal dues for the representation. Janus will require RTA to represent every member of our group, whether or not that person is a dues-paying member. The Janus case was supported by special corporate interests and the top one percent of wage earners in the country to weaken the voice and involvement of public workers such as teachers, police, nurses, and firefighters. This will certainly change the landscape for public employees. We will now have to actively recruit our members to continue paying around one thousand dollars per year for the rights and benefits that come with membership. We currently have a ninety-eight percent membership in RTA. Some associations locally will see this number reduced to seventy or eighty percent membership. I am confident that teachers and counselors of Southern Current will continue to show their support in RTA, CTA in excess of ninety percent. We will work together to ensure our voice continues to be heard locally and state well. Finally, I would like to speak on a somewhat lighter, but disappointing, though, the resignation of our superintendent, Mr. Jeff Weinstein. On behalf of myself and RTA, I would like to personally thank Jeff for all the positive changes and benefits he has brought to the students of Southern Current Unified School District. From technology, instructional programs, support programs, campus and student safety measures, the improved facilities, after-school enrichment, child nutrition including before-school, after-school and vacation meals, teacher training, the list goes on and on. Jeff has had an everlasting impact on our district. In my ten years as RTA president, I have worked with at least seven superintendents, I think, I've lost count. As many CBOs and countless administrators, I can say without reservation, Mr. Weinstein has been the most knowledgeable and collaborative superintendent I've had the pleasure with whom to work. He knows the laws and finances necessary to lead the district. He understood classroom instruction, was willing to let teachers on the front lines have input for guiding the direction of our student education. He also helped incorporate new and advanced programs to give our students opportunities they never would have had in Southern Current. Our current financial problems should not taint or tarnish the history of what Jeff has achieved for us and our students. The budget issues are the result of many variables, some of which we can control, many of which we cannot. If he stayed with our district, as I wish he would have, he would have effectively leaded us out of this pot bowl and back onto a smooth financial rope. To Mr. Weinstein, who I'm disappointed couldn't be here tonight or isn't here tonight, I greatly appreciate our regular meetings to discuss teacher, student, and instructional issues. Thank you for putting up with my hundreds of emails and occasional rants like tonight. I'm glad we never played racquetball to save me the embarrassment of an old, unathletic math teacher who's better suited for golf. And I wish you good luck and good portion in your new opportunities. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I want to give a formal congratulations to Mr. Gray on your board seat. So, as you all are aware of, our most recent MOU for classified layoffs has been finalized and with that, a little over a dozen pair of educators will not be returning for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. I know I don't need to say it again, but we are here for the students, our kids, our grandkids. And these decisions, though difficult, do come at a cost. A cost that will be directly noticeable within the classroom. Our students may not get the proper education they need, or more importantly, that they deserve. Our district's budget issues were made at the administration level and upon notice were taken out on the classified employees through two rounds of layoffs with a total of more than twenty-five, twenty classified employees. I'm here to say that the classified unit will not take to fall for management mistakes any further. We ask that you continue to look into confidential supervisory and admin-level positions as these positions do not directly impact the classroom and, most importantly, our students' safety. Thank you.
Members of the public may address the board on any items within the jurisdiction of the board by submitting presentation requests to the secretary. Members of the public, I strongly urge not to mention personnel by name and are reminded that they do not have immunity from legal action if personnel are named. The board may limit each speaker to three minutes with a total of twenty minutes per topic. People wishing to speak on the items that are on the board agenda will be called upon and that item is considered. People wishing to speak on items that are not on the board agenda will be called upon at this time. Since the board generally cannot take action on the items not on the agenda, such items will be referred to as superintendent. So, the first one we had is Sherry Quintero's phone call.
Hi, everybody. I've come here today to talk about a couple of things that I need to bring to light that I've shared with my board, with the board. There's been a lot of harassment going on to my child through the athletic, their former athletic director, Krista Reader, and Patrick Reader, our former vice president. I actually have been coming to the board about this since October of last year, or to the district since October of last year. And I walked into Jeff Weinstein's office the day before yesterday because my son was reinstated, which my son is sitting here today. My son was reinstated Wednesday. I went in Thursday to get his physical paperwork and I was told by an administrator at the high school that Garrett could not play sports because there was a policy put into place on his birthday written by Krista Reader to keep Garrett out of sports. So, I went to Jeff Weinstein's office the next day to speak to Jeff Weinstein about this because there are several other kids on behavior contracts in this district playing sports today as we speak. This is not my child. I know of several of them. I know that the superintendent gave permission for these kids to play. When I went into Jeff's office, I sat down in the waiting area and there was nobody there. I heard Jeff on the phone. I heard my son's name mentioned. I recorded the entire conversation where everything that I've come to this board for the last six months, seven, eight months was verified. That Patrick Reader, quote-unquote, "lost his mind" when the board did not expel my child. He's talking to the school's legal counsel and telling the school's legal counsel about how he made, the district made them write, or made my son write a report on proper, uh, being on social media. First of all, my son wasn't expelled for anything to do with any pictures. My son was expelled for a fight. But I know why my son was expelled. I know why my son is not being able to play sports. The proof is in the pudding and I have the pudding and I will be more than happy. I have forwarded this over to Southern Current Unified School District's legal counsel. I have forwarded over to my legal counsel. And I want to know how long this is going to continue to go on. Krista Reader had a private meeting with Brandon Tapia and Paul Walker to explicitly say, "We do not want Garrett to play sports in our program for what he did to our daughter." First of all, my son did nothing to their daughter. Their daughter sexually harassed my son and five other boys. I don't believe that this should be tolerated. I think the board needs to step up and they need to make these teachers accountable regardless of who you, regardless of who you are or what your position is here. You should help, you should have to do the consequences like everybody else. This child was given no consequence, but my child was, this other child was. What about the four other boys that have the pictures that have not even come forward, who are so scared to come forward because they saw what happened to this young man? It's not appropriate. And that's what I have to say about that. My friends. Okay, my second topic is to talk about this policy that was put into effect. First of all, I've asked the district to show me all of the minute orders. I'd like to see where this was brought before the board, three times before it was put into policy because by law, it has to be brought to the, it has to be brought two times and then the third time it can be put into policy. Second of all, I would like to know how the district is going to stand by a policy. First of all, Mr. Reader was not even allowed to be in my son's proceedings because of the conflict of interest. There is no policy that his wife or him should write or enforce that should have any direct conflict with my son. It is a conflict of interest, first of all. Second of all, it's called double jeopardy. You're punishing this child twice for an action that he was already punished for. And I would like to know and I would like an answer as to what the district is going to do about it. Are they going to really uphold a policy that was put into place on this child's birthday to say, "Have a nice day"? I did nothing. I didn't even, I didn't even call the police on their child. But now I'm being forced to have to file a restraining order against Krista Reader and her daughter. I'd like, again, I'd like to know if my son is going to be able to play sports. My son has worked his tail off since he was four years old. And anybody in here that has ever seen my son play sports will tell you that kid plays with his whole heart. And I will not, I will leave not one rock unturned until this boy gets to do what he deserves to do. If he was wrong and he did something wrong, I would accept your punishment and I may not like it, but I'd accept it. But he did what you asked him to do and he did above what you asked him to do. And I think that you guys need to let this young man play sports. He has a very bad family life. Sports is the only outlet that these kids have and this policy of taking these kids that have contracts out of sports is absolutely wrong, not only for my child, but for every other child in this district. These kids that have issues, we need to keep their butts so darn tired that all they want to do is go home and sleep. They don't want to break into people's cars. They don't want to tag on people's stuff because they're so tired, all they want to do is go to sleep. These kids, darker-skinned kids, kids that live over on the other side of the tracks, have purposely been kept out of Southern Current Unified District's sports programs because of Krista Reader. I want to know how long they're going to allow this to take place. She has told several people that she wrote this policy to get him and then she resigned so it wouldn't come back to bite her. Well, I'm here to tell her I'm going to have a civil action that's going to show her it's going to bite her. The next item I have to discuss is our new board member. I don't know you, Mr. Gray. I'm not here to judge you. I was made aware of a situation that has, has me kind of weary. I mean, here we didn't allow one gentleman to get a job here last week because he had some type of background. And today, we find out that our own board member has a background and it was actually one of your family members that gave me the information, which was really shocking to me. I'm just, I'm baffled. I'm baffled and what concerns me the most is because I know that you and Patrick Reader are good friends and I'm scared where that's going to take my child. I'm scared what's going to happen to my child. I honest-to-God am and that's my reason. And I will walk through heaven and hell to protect this young man because he deserves it. And I'm a single mother and I'm a lot of things, but I'm not a man. And I'm trying to raise a young man, to be a young man. He is a good boy. He's a smart-mouthed teenage kid, but he's a gentle giant. And anybody that knows him knows that he would protect a teacher, he would protect a student. He has protected, protected students. He has protected teachers. That is who this young man is, not who that family tried to portray. And you know what? Until he pulled his little stunt here the other night, he probably had the upper hand. But it was like a five-year-old watching the kid get his candy taken away. Oh, we reinstated him. Oh, he gets, it's all on tape. You're worried about child safety, but you don't care to put people on our board? You don't care to try to get people hired that have backgrounds, criminal backgrounds? I'm sorry, I call, I call bull crap. You know, you care about your, personal agendas are what's cared about. You know, you stood in our school district three years ago. I, I mean, I don't, I don't, over, as they tell us to talk about, to talk about not so much sports, you know, getting a, getting a, you know, education and this and that, all over the sports program. I mean, what's good for one is good for the other and that's not what I've seen happen here. I've seen what's good for the one we don't like, that's the one we pick on. And for the rest, oh, we cover and we protect them and we treat them as if they're the victim when they're not the victim, they're the perpetrator. This kid right here is the only victim in this room. She can't help that her parents are assholes and he can't help that his parents are asshole. And this has gone on for far too long. And I am absolutely just done. My family deserves to heal and to move on. That little girl deserves to heal and move on. Thank you.
Next up, the person to speak is Richardson.
How you doing? Never really done this before. In this manner of speaking, of, I'm here today as I'm watching the changes going on here in this district. And what it sets me is that through cuts, through budget, through adults not being able to just get along, I have to watch children suffer. My son goes here to Ascend Academy, beautiful campus, beautiful school. Love the program, I love what they do. But I will not watch teachers have to step away. I will not watch counselors have to leave due to incompetence of adults that can't get a budget stream. My son and the other children deserve way more than that. They need more than that. When I'm talking about the kids at Droppico or at RES or the high school at West Park, we're talking about the kids here at Ascend who are special needs, who have autism, DID, conduct disorders. Kids that go to school depressed, kids that go to school want to commit suicide. My son was one of them. Ms. Taylor, she helped us through all that. And while my son was put in place and molested by a man, this school, Ascend, stood by and helped us every step of the way. So, the next time you cut a budget and the next time you fight amongst each other, just remember that it doesn't just affect the teachers. It affects the children here in this town. It affects my kid, it affects their kids. It affects all of them. I get, there's over three thousand kids in this district going to school. But there's over a hundred just right here that deserve just a little bit more. And when you take away, they lose. Now, I'm not saying that one kid is worth more than the other. But these are the kids that can't defend themselves, as no kid can defend itself. But these are the ones that come home and say, "Mommy, Daddy, I don't know what to do today, my mind hurts." Some kids can adjust to a teacher leaving, some kids can adjust to a therapist who ain't gone. These kids, they can't adjust. It takes them forever. I know, I live it every day. I live with a son that has autism spectrum. I live with a son that has DID disorder, that's disassociative identity disorder and involved, has classified, has split personality. I've watched manifestations of my son since the age of five years old. This school started three and a half years ago. Through the help of Cheryl, through the help of Ms. Naughterman, through the help of the counselors here, my son has become a different person, for good and bad. But the next time you guys decide to cut a budget, or the next time you guys decide to not get along, think about the kids first before you think about yourselves because it's not fair to any of them. Thank you.
So, as many of you, as many of you have read online, this will be a little bit hard for me to vocalize, but just bear with me. I do have a record. I was convicted when I was nineteen-four. For a state robbery with my best friends. Obviously, because it was staged, it gave me the opportunity to reduce it because I admitted to my guilt. I spent a decade trying to get back on my feet, trying to make something to my wife and my children that were that were born thereafter. And it's not easy for a convicted criminal. Even if the charges eventually were reduced to misdemeanor. Even if you have the opportunity to have it expunged. After that decade, I was finally able to learn every, use everything that I had learned to help push forward and ultimately fully be able to repay society for the wrongness I did. Obviously, I still carry a lot of grief for being such a fool. But I believe it's helped guide me in a lot of decisions that I've made later on as a man. It's helped me steal some sort of compass in both my sons and now my daughter who's still with us. I don't think there's anybody else in this room that understands the need for forgiveness and a second opportunity. I also don't think there's anybody else in this room, more than me, that understands what it takes and hurdles that you're going to have to go through in order to prove that you deserve that opportunity. But in contrast to that, I also feel that there's nobody else in this room that is more qualified to say that without doubt when something is created as a policy, it should be followed, it must be followed because if not, then we might as well not even do it. I understand you're upset with the timing of the policy that was put in place and I think that that might be something that needs to go into closed session. Actually, that policy was started over a year and a half prior to the So, something of that where the board needs to be able to disclose those facts that if it was started a year and a half ago and then just simply finalized, unfortunately, on your son's birthday.
You guys are continuing to allow people to play on a sports contract.
I wholeheartedly agree with you there. If it's good for one, it should be good for all.
The superintendent should get to decide like the other superintendent they got to decide.
And I think that might be some of the issues that have been wrong with this district in the past because I'm a superintendent who obviously exercised the right to waive things without full permission. But I just want you to know, even being a friend of Patrick and Krista, as much as you may hate that.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, well, as much as you may be concerned of that, you know where I'm coming from now. you know where I'm coming from now. It may not be something that you'll maybe like because of the decision that I, that I make as a board member here. But there's three others here today and there will soon be one, hopefully in the next sixty days. And I just wanted, five voices that I think mine carries a lot of weight with this particular matter. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was crystal clear on what it was that I did and how long ago it was. And what I've had to do overcoming and why I believe that it's a core part of myself within all of my decision-making and why I think it might benefit and will benefit while I'm in and requesting the kids in this district. That's all.
Does there any questions?
Is there any questions?
I'd make a motion that we approve the old cap presentation that we had from last week.
Second by, on favor.
Aye.
District budget.
Hi, my name is Melanie Roberts and I'm here on behalf of my kids and resident kids in this district. I've been parent educator for over two years and a parent volunteer for almost 12. As a parent of children in this district, I'd like to know how this board and district did not see this financial crisis coming. For those current board members who seems are up for reelection, it's a danger. What properties or assurance do we as community have that you would act to prevent this from being a threat? This issue that we have that's directly affecting our classrooms is not acceptable. Because, again, as a mother, it affects my personal children and it affects the students in their work. We all need to come together and not use availed anonymity to hide behind and be more transparent with our board. I ask that you answer to the community, especially for those who are up for reelection. How can we trust that if we go further, act as a public, protecting our children from what happens?
I would make a motion for discretion. To approve the budget. The budget that we received, and then I just saw another copy. Which one are we approving?
I want to do more fact. I did it off there, it was different. The board package has those lease payments haven't discussed. That comes $4 million in leases.
Yeah, I saw that on the one that's in the pack. This one. Revised.
I don't know where that came from.
Okay.
Board package one.
Okay. Yeah, I did give Chester a look. And I want to address the question that you had. There was a lot of things that came to light in the last four months that had not been addressed that we were not given information of. There has been a lot of changes since then to address that problem. There's some that I cannot tell you because of confidentiality issues. I wish I could. But I believe they will be remedied. There is no reason that we should have had to make these cuts. The cuts were made because of a sudden disclosure of stuff. If we had known some of the stuff that we found in the last six months or so, there would be a different outcome. There's certain things that once the year starts, we can't change. And we have to live with those decisions. Once we approve the budget, any board members that come up, they have no power to do a whole lot of anything except to follow the year. And all the cuts have to be made, start in March. So there's certain deadlines that have to be met and when you can do them and when you can't do them. So there's a lot of things that have to be done at certain times. And once they're done, you can't change them. I just wish there's more that I can say about those things, but again, there's certain things that I can talk about. There are things I can't. Yes?
What assurances for, I guess, even comfort measures as parents? And we're here to know that a problem is around and that the loophole for being closed.
You'll see a lot of changes in the next, well, before, before the year starts to make sure that our kids get better after. And Mr. Pogge, we're trying to get your money for your teachers.
I'd like to add on to that and respond to your questions. To me, as a new board member, I might offend my fellow board members. But I find it completely unacceptable that they, that they do nothing about this. I'm not trying to offend them and I don't want to point blame to anyone. But I believe, as I found out this Monday, that the core root of this is a bylaw, or I heard, sorry, not a bylaw, board policy that 9200, paragraph four, sentence two, that restricts them from directly asking or requesting information from anybody except through the superintendent. To me, that is lunacy that we are not allowed to go and just speak to somebody or to ask for information from Mr. Wexler. How can you not trust or how do you, how do you have that much blind faith in somebody? You have to at least trust them, but verify that what they're giving you is actually the truth. And so I submitted to the superintendent this morning a motion for an agenda item to remove that sentence from the board policy. Removing the individual restraints from board members from being able to verify that what Ms. Leanne, unfortunately, I'm sorry, this is kind of being dumped on you. Is actually telling us the truth. I don't understand how that that is not part of every single school. That ability to question the person who's reporting you, that you're putting so much faith in, and you're the only person we employ. The only one we can fire. Exactly. So, as I said, I hope I don't offend anybody on this board, but I think that that's, that's the first step to opening up transparency for this school district and to making sure that this type of financial fiasco doesn't happen again. This is twice that this has happened while my children have been in school.
Just to add, second by Mr. Davis, that I think that I'm going to Mr. Wexler and ask him for an answer and then we can.
Okay. Well, I mean, the board, the board has made immediately clear that I could not request information.
Well, what I'm saying is like if you went to a certain person and they had no jurisdiction over their job, then you're not going to that person. So, you know what I'm saying? So like we need to go through that individual's job description. Like you can go to, or you can go and talk to that. You can go and talk to that.
I still think it would be advisable, yeah. I still think it'd be advisable to remove that, so that way it's not offending us.
Well, besides just naming that, there's that code that is backed up by law too, so it's not that easy.
Well, yes, I mean, let's at least make the initial steps and you have a solid reason because obviously there's issues of confidentiality and disclosure. There's also issues that we should not be managing, that's fine, we're not here to manage, but we are here to inquire, so that way we can ensure our responsibilities, because we are bound by it as well. We can't just delegate this away and say this is her fault or his fault, because that's our one employee. We are ultimately responsible, especially according to the eligibility.
Well, the function of the school board, you guys sign off on a bunch of things too, correct?
Correct.
So
There's a lot of stuff we gotta sign off on.
You have to approve some things as well as deny some of these too, correct? But this isn't the first time that the school district has kind of fallen on.
Erin, if you don't mind, sir, just waiting just a bit, there was
She's had her hand.
One hand over here that is right before you, so I would like to hear your opinion on that.
Hi.
Is this all related to this unit?
Yeah, it is. I have a question. Why are our chief business officers and chief financial officers still? I know you can't answer it, but I won't put this button here. Why are they still here? Obviously, this has been going on and it just became light about four months ago. What about the entire nine months? This has been brought to your attention more than four months ago. So that way, you as a board could have done something instead of laying off kids? Thirteen of them, without any support or administrator during the summer. She didn't even send an email, text, nothing to any of the parents or the students to let them know that her stipend was removed and that they had no advisor during the summer. She wasn't responding to messages, has not responded to messages, has not even responded to maintenance when they had to clear out the sewage. She ghosted thirteen kids. And the only reason why those kids are thriving is because previous kids and also because of the kids that are currently in, that have been, that have one year under them.
We're off topic there.
Okay. I just want like Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I just, oh.
Is it regarding the district budget?
Yeah, it's regarding the topic, just something that you said. I was just curious how you, how the board picks and chooses policies that they want to get rid of and most that they want to keep. I was just curious.
Alright, so that's going to approve the district budget.
So Erin, did you, on you, go ahead.
Second by, on favor. Okay, approval by the management, that's the end of the council.
So As members of CSRM, they're part of the board, so we have to appoint four members to CSRM.
And they are?
Leanne.
If we should replace it, we have an Eric. Second by, Hulse. On favor. Approve resolutions 17-18-26, ready to participate in self-funding excess liability.
This is a resolution that the state requires for any organization that self-funds the workers' compensation. So, your self-funding for CSRM is a decided one.
Will we accept the resolution?
I'll second it. On favor. Approve agreement with schools excess liability fund for joint exercise of powers.
Schools excess liability fund is a fund that funds, it covers excess liability. Anything above or CSRM covers schools excess liability.
It's a work of the cup, right?
Yeah. It's insurers insured.
Do you hear a motion? Here, second by. On favor. Approve food service, child nutrition department, written code contact.
So, because food service is a federal program, the written code contact is required by federal law. And we did, we did not have it. So it's one of the requirements that we have to pass to continue with our program. And it has to do with procurement and any conflicts that have been caused. Probably will be approved.
Here, second by. On favor. Food food service, child nutrition department, procurement procedure.
So in addition to the code of conducts for federal procurement of food services, we have to have procurement procedures and invite everyone to follow.
And we approve, please. Second, I'll second it. On favor. We do an approved board policy by zero, zero student enrollment, non-discrimination statement.
Federal government requires that anybody that receives reimbursement has to have a wellness policy, a wellness policy has to have a nondiscrimination statement which says we don't discriminate any that gives them directions on it. If you feel like you can discriminate.
Directions on it, if you feel like you can discriminate. Motion by Harris, second by. On favor.
I'll make a motion on a law personally written.
First, on favor. For food administrative assignments for 2018, 2019, Georgia.
Um, we did have Mrs. Kennedy present today, so she won't, she won't be present.
I'll make a motion to accept.
That's the chair. I'll second it. On favor. And Mr. Eric, I believe you have a statement from Mr. Lisa.
Yeah. So, Santiago Meza, he asked me to read out a statement. He's on vacation with his family, he won't be here. So, he asked me to do it with excitement and sincerity. It's just not me. I'll be sincere. My apologies that I cannot be here with you tonight, because I am on a family vacation with my amazing wife and my two wonderful kids. Thank you, Board of Education, Leanne, Eric, for this opportunity to lead Roseman Elementary School. It is with great privilege and honor that I accept this leadership role to join the Rockin' Rockin' family. Robert. I didn't, I didn't get here alone. It is, it is with building relationship, relationships with those along my journey through life that I am here. I am thankful to all who have offered support, guidance, leadership, examples, friendship, and love in my journey. I am grateful, grateful for this opportunity to work side by side with the staff of Roseman Elementary. I am grateful to have an amazing assistant principal, Mr. Trinidad Gonzalez, to share and support the staff in this adventurous journey. I hope I gave that justice.
Second by. The Harris, on favor.
Aye.